Good evening. The time is now seven o'clock. And I would call this Board of Selectmen meeting to the Board at 7:00 p.m. on the 10th, 2021, and ask that you would please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public political standing, one nation under our individual liberty and justice crawl.
We go to the roll call.
Our candidate.
Kevin Patnian.
Kathy Doerr.
And Kathy, he's not here yet. Item C, approve the meeting minutes from 4/26/21, and then to request to modify the meeting minutes of 1/25/21. I will note that in 1/25/21, it talked on item number five, talking about, in the discussion that they would like to remove them because it had been to meetings, or I should have said had not been to meetings. So I'm going to start with that one if you would entertain, I would entertain motion this time to accept the modification for January 25, 21.
So move.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we go to the most recent one, which is April 26, on a massive discussion, entertain motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Do we still have errors in this one?
Could we? I had 4/74.
Yeah. Number six.
Number six.
Do we have to read the justice motion to approve the appointment, not to appoint, but to approve the appointment of the Assistant Town Clerk.
Oh, you're talking about the first one?
Number six at the end.
Okay, that was the one from January 25, just a motion to approve.
That, the change.
Oh, we want to see a big modification on that as well?
Should I wait? That was five, number six, at the end. Kevin stated, ordinance 116, Board of Selectmen have to, we have to approve the appointment, not to appoint.
Right.
Town Clerk appoints there. So if that's meant, there was another one too. I went through this like I did the ordinance issue. So I think it was in this one. No.
So you're saying in item six, the, should be saying states, the department has need to be approved of their appointment?
The Assistant Town Clerk, we have to approve the appointment, that's all, not appoint them. Cabinet is called a he, and maybe it should be a she.
That will probably be a problem. Where is it?
I'm trying to find, oh, same, same one, number six, B. Says Kathy stated, he did not see this resume, she did not see.
Cabinet, I see where it is.
So.
Those are the three that?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 25.
As of?
21, as of May.
Okay, or I mean, send a motion to amend. On the second, any other discussion? Any non-favor say aye.
Aye.
Now on the current.
Are there any corrections?
Entertained motion to approve.
Wrong one, hold on. There is a correction?
There is.
There is. In public comment, you referred to general statute 7-747, it should be 7-474, B.
For public comments, that was, someone rang you for attention and it was incorrect, and they did state that.
Yes, it did. Yeah. Yeah.
Which we mentioned that later on.
So should, should you leave it at that then?
Yes, because that's what the public had commented on.
This was commented.
We corrected everybody to get down item number six.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 26, 2021.
As written.
As written.
Item second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item D, which is now public comment. Anybody here to speak for the public lines? If not, we can go right into, if there is no old business, we'll go right into new business. First item up on the table is to discuss an act on the appointment of Fire Marshal, Emergency Management Director, and Burning Official, which we currently have one, but he is looking to retire, and this is our next step in order to get to that process. So what we have is, if you wouldn't mind speaking just for a few minutes, I'll speak back and forth. We have had, we'll go through the nickname first, Dino, but his real name is.
Constantino.
Constantino Galasso. So he's been working with the Fire Marshal to go over all of the, you know, what we do on a daily basis. It's almost impossible to hit what you do on a daily basis as a Fire Marshal, because anything can come up. So you have graciously said it's time to put him to this role, you're still going to stay on for a few more weeks to be sure he's okay, and that's part one. So Constantino has been working with two, at least two of the Fire Chiefs so far, maybe three?
He has met with two of them already. So he is, is meeting with the Police Chief, Chief Ariado was postponed, and he's still working to contact EMS Chief and Central Village Fire Chief.
But we just said that can be done before end of month, so get the introductions all done. So we did hire Constantino, he likes to go by Dino, but makes it much easier.
What's his last name?
Galasso, G.A.L.A.S.S.O. And what the process is, there's a state statute that allows us to make that appointment, and then we go from there to having him sworn in. So there's a state statute, it leaves 29-297, and once we make that appointment to those three titles, he then gets sworn in by the Town Clerk. And so if you have any other questions to the current Fire Marshal about his.
Will you do the next, what, five minutes?
Yeah.
Well, he's a very talented young man. He has experience as Deputy Fire Marshal in the town of Thompson. He knows the basics of the Fire Marshal business, does not know a lot about the emergency management side of things. So we've been trying to work with scenarios and events that have developed in town and that will develop in town, looking at his response to that. He's currently a Burning Official in Thompson, so he's well aware of the state statutes and the procedures for that, so that's not going to be a problem. Since he's been here, he started April 19th, we've had several call-ups for house fires. We're now dealing with a hoarding, two hoarding unsafe condition cases in the last two weeks that we're looking at remediating without going down the road of legal action and relocating the people, so. Trying to show him that there's an easier side of things, there's a more casual Plainfield way of doing things, as opposed to taking a two-by-four out and hitting people over the head with a coat lever or something like that. Trying to get that, trying to get that through, I think, I think he'll do well. He's young, he has the ability to stay here for an extended period of time, kind of like I do.
So once we do that appointment, then again, the Town Clerk does the swearing-in ceremony, and then you have to notify the appointment to the State Fire Marshal.
Okay, one question, because item two, this appointment of Deputy Fire Marshals, is Constantino, is he like, okay with this? Is he?
Oh, absolutely. We talked about the existing arrangement we have with our three existing Deputy Fire Marshals from Griswold and Sterling, very understandable about the nature of that relationship between the towns. He is, he knows most of them remotely, but he has no problems in working with them, and he realizes that he can't do everything, and that's the reason why we need the deputies, because we can't sit at home waiting 24/7 for something to come up. You have to have that backup coach.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion to appoint Constantino Galasso to the Fire Marshal, Emergency Management Director, and Burning Official for the town of Plainfield.
As of today, or as of what day?
As of, well, we can do a swearing-in ceremony as of tomorrow.
As of tomorrow, that's fine.
So it's May 11. I'll make that motion.
I will do a bittersweet second, because at the same time we're doing this, we're also losing a lot of years of experience, and much appreciated for all of those years, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. The next item, as you were alluding to, is a discussion for the, an act on appointment of Deputy Fire Marshals. You'll note that in our current budget, we have now allocated some monies to help offset that while Constantino is available. There are times where that may come up where he is not around, and we need to have that mutual support. We've had so far Tom Holloway, Jim Sweet, and Fred Marzen. So we're also adding to that list, if we prove, adding to that list two more people to do that, and that would be Mr. Paul Yellen and Mr. Travis Irons. So this will be at an hourly rate, we allocated up to $10,000 for it, and we're going to try to work that through for the year, see how that works out. And we'll make adjustments as we go, but I thought it'd be best to do that as an hourly rate and see how it works out.
You work that out with him?
Yeah. We're having some discussions.
It seems to be a fairer way for the town to pay them while they're doing the work that they're sworn to do, and once they get paid, they are then covered by our workers' compensation insurance and our liability insurance. These gentlemen have been coming into town for the last four or five years and working with us on some significant cases with no liability insurance and no workers' coverage, and that's very scary to some of them. And if we, Kevin and I, weren't able to come up with an agreement here, we would have lost all of our deputies.
What I'm trying to ask, is if $10,000 isn't enough?
Oh, absolutely.
Do you work out?
Yeah, and we looked at a couple of different hourly rates and divided it out, we just pulled one number out of our hat today, roughly $30 an hour, divide that, divide your $10,000 by $30 an hour, you come up with over $300 hours of service in the course of the year, and we've never used our deputies that much. So I think, I think that amount is very much on the high side, because we really, really didn't have.
We have enough to cover.
That'd be fine.
Of course, they need to get paid.
Excuse me?
They need to get paid, yes.
You know, that, that would be a nice, right? You know, coffee and lunch can only carry so far.
So at this point, I would be looking to entertain a motion to appoint Travis Irons and Paul Yellen as Deputy Fire Marshals for the town of Plainfield.
So move.
Item second, any other discussion? Any non-favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So you're back on the, you're back on the payroll already, so to speak.
So.
The other thing that's great about that is the fact that you have all those years of experience between those gentlemen, they were distinct, so that does help out quite a bit. All right, item three, as the state progresses and moves, we'd like to discuss and approve a resolution in support of the home rule in municipal zoning. So the state of Connecticut, I won't say his divine wisdom, because I don't think there is much here. For those people who have been following what's been going on with the state of Connecticut this year, is one of the bigger things is talking about their municipal zoning and how they would like to modify that so that the state of Connecticut has more oversight. And there's a lot of things that are going on to their decisions, but it looks as though we are looking at some troubling times if this passes forward. So there's a resolution that we have, thank you very much. There's a resolution that was put together, and we'd like to, you know, briefly discuss and see what your thoughts are on that. It's called Basis of Worth of This, is to let the state of Connecticut know that the town of Plainfield really has a problem with how they're trying to promote it. It takes a lot of things away from us, and the highlights, Mary Ann can discuss some of the highlights of this, but this is really to my opinion, because I listened to a lot of that, maybe 11 or 12 hours of that discussion online about it, when they talked about 1024 and 6611, and how there were, there were towns that were favored, there were towns against, and there were a lot of things that were going on on the other side of the state where they were not listening to applicants who were going through zoning, so they were having problems there. Unlike what we allow the other towns to do, they listen, and they, they react appropriately, and they do the right thing. And just because of a few towns, in my opinion, was doing the wrong thing, they decided to put together something through CCM and Disseminate Connecticut to put something forth that really hinders a lot of towns being able to act properly on their own zoning, actually paraphrase like that. So this here talks about a, how you're structuring the local planning zoning process, and the things that really are at risk. And so, you know, like the multifamily development can lead to exponential market value, overbuilding can cause adverse impacts to the town destruction, they're talking about in the bill, some of the things where if, I guess I can give a couple of examples. One would be, if you're talking about bringing in big development, you don't have to necessarily have to have parking for it. Can you imagine 100 units coming in and not having to have parking?
Not in the lease.
Yes, Mary Ann?
And it's also proposed to be as of right, as opposed to going through any kind of a planning and zoning commission approval process.
Yep. Infrastructure, talking about sewer water tanks, and again, that puts a big burden on the town. So I just think the things that they were talking about really didn't consider all of the towns municipalities, I mean, there's 169 of us, but what they were looking at was basically two or three that really had the problems. Instead of working with those two or three towns, they brought this up to 1024, 6611, there's another 10 or 11 that were actually grouped together, and eventually that's what happens, they, these bills get, you know, pared down into one or two, final bills get voted on. So this resolution basically talks about how the fact that we're, we have already discussed this with the zoning board of appeals, and they are definitely in favor of this resolution. Tomorrow night will be planning zoning, and we're hoping that they will do the same thing and discuss this and bring it forward, and I think that the Board of Selectmen tonight will be able to vote to approve this resolution, bringing forth as a resolution to the state of Connecticut, to say that this is our feelings on this zoning.
Are you going to enter that into the minutes?
Yes.
Do I know typos?
Oh, there's typos, where would they be?
Ninth, whereas, town. Let's give you space after, the common.
Oh, spacing issue, whereas, common, space.
Yep. Next page. Second paragraph, at the end, planning and zoning, should that be capitalized? That's a group. I'm just going by your reading ordinances, reading ordinances that would be capitalized, planning and zoning.
It's all, it's all capitalized, though.
Huh?
You can now therefore?
No, yeah, that's the last sentence of it, at the end of that paragraph. Right there. Planning and zoning.
It's all zoning legislation?
Last line.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Planning and zoning.
Related to planning and zoning, not really, doesn't have to be capitalized. Because you're talking about their actual work, because they're doing on their title of a board.
Now go to the end of that, should town be capitalized?
Not really. Well, it's planning, those capital, never mind. So does that place?
I've been reading ordinances.
Are you?
There it would be, so.
So if we make a modification with a space after that, whereas, common, space, by right? You're okay with that? So I entertain a motion to accept the modified resolution as presented with that modification.
So move.
And I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will try to have this signed and ready for your board for tomorrow night, that way we can move forward. Thank you. And thank you, Mary Ann, for dragging that up. In your package, you have a item four, which is to discuss an approval letter to support the East Coast Energy to the Deciding Council. You may have seen this in the past, I will tell you that their presentation that is a, was a PowerPoint, it's been printed out for you. They were already going to vote before the Deciding Council, so really it's a matter of where we stand on it. There's, I can ask Mary Ann to ask, to talk about it as well, but my opinion is that they're going to go in front of the Deciding Council, they've talked about some issues for safety in here that they, I'll send it printed out, but they were, they were already anticipating the fact of what they can do for safety, we've already talked to the Fire Marshal before about it, he's already looked at plans, it's self-contained, each of the eight units is supposed to be self-contained. I don't see a big problem with it, you notice on the very last page, which we're not going to talk about publicly, but you notice on the last page, that there's a proposal there if they were to come to town, because we've been working with the tax assessor, to give an idea of what we could get annually for, you know, over 20 or 30-year period. Really, at this point, what we would do as a municipality would be saying that we're either in favor or not in favor, and therefore write a letter to such to the Deciding Council.
Which is hard to do without any information on.
But you'd have to write, write something to say that you, there's something substantive that is not working right for this project, whether it be a huge safety issue or something to that effect, where it's going to cause more harm than good, so we don't see that at this point, so.
So you ask all the questions, so you wouldn't be able to answer my questions?
No.
If it catches fire, it has a fire suppression.
Suppression inside.
Okay, but in that time, this is toxic material, right? These batteries?
Of all of the self-contained units, some of it is.
Okay. Will fumes come out of that unit? Toxic.
We would have to have a, like, someone like Mr. Gator Company, they can follow that and do tests on it in a right way, but there is minimal, they anticipate minimal escape, but there will be escape.
So I mean, it must be, it must be something that they catch, they have fires, otherwise they wouldn't put a fire suppression.
Fire suppression, and then extra, make sure that they put it on the desk.
That's a fire problem. That would be the only problem I have, I, obviously, if you talk to Paul Yellen, then the firefighters are equipped and they know how to deal with stuff like this.
He didn't have any issues with it.
Okay, because I didn't even know if they were equipped for this.
Yes. So what would you like to do with this?
I guess we'll make a motion and send a letter to the Deciding Council in favor of the project. They did say they're going to do it anyway.
All right, you made that motion, I would second. Any other discussion? Any non-favor, say aye.
Aye.
And tonight, we have members of the Charter Revision Commission here, what I did was, I printed off, what I did was, I printed off the items that you had listed, and I entered minutes and your revision for your schedule, just so you can be aware, this is supposed to be a joint meeting, but really we're taking advice and your input on what you've come up with so far for charter revision changes. So you have the chairperson here, if you don't mind, if you wouldn't mind getting up and speak about, one, two?
No, I don't.
Seven, is seven on there?
Well, I was wondering about the 11-9, about the language, the gender language.
Well, we didn't bring, we didn't bring that forward.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, no. So we have seven, and we gave you a list of which, they're pretty straightforward, but we have to figure out how to word them.
And I thought you did a very good job, by the way, you asked for input from the public, which included the chairperson of the board of finance, so we did some good numbers, so we came up to, as an example, the third one down, 25B, where you said that the shut-dollar amount, non-budget appropriations be updated from $50,000 to 100, maximum, before town meetings needed. It, that's, to me, is also a great idea, because you're not 1984.
Yeah, we, we just.
Could be more than that, but I think that's a reasonable chunk to go to 100,000.
We decided that you can't buy the same things that you did in 1984 for $10,000, so.
As much as we would.
It's like impossible to keep having, well, we wanted to save money for the town, too. Keep having votes and referendums and trying to, town meetings for something that we could, you could just purchase and.
I think that's a reasonable number.
Not go into any difficulty, and then 100,000 maximum on that, does that make sense?
Yes.
So you can't spend more than 100,000 before you have to have a meeting. And, oh, section 10-5, the capital improvements, that I had trouble wording, so I wanted you to explain that a little bit more, if you could.
So that was one of my ideas of coming up with 10-5, which should capital improvements remain on the list, even if they're not accomplished during the budget year, but that, what I'm looking for really is a, what is the value to having, like, we'll go next Monday to a vote on the budget, the budget has three questions, it's always, if the town budget fails, I'll use that example, if the town budget fails, it has to be restructured and re-voted on. If the Board of Education budget passes, then they're all set. But this says nothing about what to do with capital limits, it's just, okay, there's capital limit, it could pass, it could fail, but there's no consequence if it fails. So I'd like to see something moral in the lines of if it does fail, we have to bring it back and restructure, but it would be helpful to know why it failed. So there might be some advisory questions on that too, to say, what is it, why, we did that years ago, was, why is it that you think it's too high, too low, and hopefully get input from the public as to why, because it makes it difficult to say, well, whatever you want to do with the capital, five-year capitals is okay. I think I explained during that meeting last time that a five-year capital, it has a lot to do with how you're forecasting on your budget for a five-year period, and at times, if you're putting numbers down for, I don't know, Quinbuck Valley Trail, if you don't put that down there, then you also could not be eligible for something that comes along when it comes up to a grant, because you're not working on it, which is kind of what happened this year, when we talked about the police looking to upgrade their communications. So that was like two for one, it was over the valid dollar limit, but it also should have been on five-year capital, had it been on the five-year capital, you could have gone to the board of finance to ask for something to modify line and transfers to make that happen without having to go to a town meeting. So I think there's a.
Yeah, wording that is a little tough.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure exactly how to word it, but I know we have to come up with a final draft.
Absolutely.
At the next meeting.
It'll have to go to the town legal.
Well, that's, that's exactly the point I was going to say.
Right.
Well, we're having a problem with those types of wording and how we put it together. You can absolutely take it to the town attorney, because he has worked with these types of things before, and give us a better, you know, evaluation of what each one of the votes, how to word it properly.
Wouldn't we automatically pass each one of those by the legal lines?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the other one I wanted to mention was the voting districts and polling places were already changed. It was changed so that it could be changed at the last charter revision in two thousand and eighteen. But it doesn't say who would be responsible to
Make those changes.
And I don't, we wanted to have something that said the board of selectmen, but also with the recommendation of the registrars.
In conjunction, I would say, in conjunction with the registrars.
Right. So the specific change that has to be made would determine, be determined maybe even by the registrars. That they said, if they said, hey, we're going to spend this much, there's only this many people coming to vote, maybe we should just have it at these two polling places or whatever they decide. So somehow that has to be worded.
The wording like in conjunction with would work because usually it's either the board of finance or the board of selectmen that set up those types of dates and meetings for referendum. So in conjunction with the registrar voters. Because I can't just arbitrarily say, oh, we're going to bring down to one. And it's going to be at the high school. Because a lot of things in play there, we'd have to work with that, so. Registrar voters would give us pleasure. Give us that suggestion of how we'd be able to bring to, I think they were talking one time, two.
Anyone else from the charter want to bring anything up?
We have a wonderful group of hardworking people here.
I just have a question. The referendum for twenty-five, okay, section two dash four B, it says twenty-five percent, fifteen percent, or even ten percent, percent of what?
Question voters.
Okay.
Okay, what you're looking for at the end of the day would be which would be more appropriate, whether it's fifteen or ten, we asked for it on the registrar voters, was that that thing? And they're still waffling on which would be better.
She's saying that they just don't show up. A lot of people don't show up.
Right.
So why, why punish ourselves by looking for twenty-five percent when ten, five percent show up, you know, or fifteen?
And we'll definitely try to, to increase those numbers as we be learning different things. The next whole system is definitely going to work. Tomorrow, you'll probably see the signs out there of voting on next Monday. So you'll see those signs pop up again. Our only concern is making sure we have enough space in this facility so when we have our next meeting, because we only have a fifty percent capacity, these tables will actually be up here to give us more spacing all through the back and we'll make sure that that's all cleaned out the back corner. Just so we can get, if it's maximum three fifty, we get one seventy-five. With this being a zero mil increase and we don't anticipate any other changes, I don't think we'll have that many people show up. But you never know, so.
So we have to work more on the rough draft and getting all the elements in each section that we want to include. That's our next step.
And then ultimately it goes to the board.
Right, it will go back to you at a later date. And also, did you find out about the changes in the dates? Can I submit it the way I wrote it, like that, or?
I can, you can talk to the town board about that.
Okay, because I have to bring it, I want to bring it in tomorrow so that it gets on the meeting Thursday.
Okay.
And.
We can coordinate the time that you can come in because we have some other things we have to do tomorrow, first thing in the morning. Which we'll get to in a sec. But I do want to say thank you very much because this looks like a, a very manual list. It hits a lot of the high points of definitely the number two is two four B and also two five B. Definitely. I think the, kind of an odd one was that you all caught, which I think was great, was you caught the section four one B, the board of finance increased membership to seven. And that's kind of an important thing because, Tom, what are you doing when there's three to three? You know, there's a three to three vote and then you're, have to recast.
Yep. That scenario hasn't happened in recent time, but it doesn't mean that it never would, so.
So how would you get that seventh person on? I mean, this isn't going to the public till election day.
Right, well, we'd have to actually, it would have to be a special election, in fact. If it was allowed and they voted on it and they said yes, then it could be a special election for that other person. We'd have to turn up the years, obviously, it would work.
Right.
And stagger it properly.
You can always go back to the board and see how to stagger it. There's an ordinance.
Yeah. Yes.
I'd just like to really publicly thank you for being our chair and, I mean, I think you've done a wonderful job.
Yeah, but you, you're so good. Look at them. They're all prepared. They bring their boxes, their papers. It's, it's really.
Well, she's done a wonderful job sharing our meetings that I appreciate.
Definitely.
Sounds like they're on the right path with all the dates and everything too, so we'll make sure about those tomorrow and go forward. So thank you very much. There are two other items which I'd like to do at this time, request that there is a motion to add two items onto the agenda.
I'll make that motion, add two items, add items six and seven.
Item six will be discuss and act on bid for the wide format scanner plotter to go to executive session for discussion on real estate transaction. So you've made the motion for those two items.
I'm not getting more.
All in favor say aye. Thank you. Item number six, we are now talking about the wide form matter scan. We had a bid, the bid came in and you see in your packet, here is all the information on the bid that day that was opened. It was also the day I put together the agenda, so that's why it was tough to get around it because there's still more homework to do in detailing what is the best one, better than people. So there's more detail to this as to why one would be better than the other, even though one might be a little bit. So that's why I asked Mary Ann to put that forward to us. You will see in your packet all the bids that are of concern. So if you wouldn't mind taking it from here, that would help us out.
We got, as you can see by the, by the bid document, we have four responses. When you look at the bid tally sheet, Merrick Raddick appears to be the low bidder. Now, we're looking at double, a double roll machine. But when you take into account the cost of the service and maintenance contract and whatnot and the ink costs and paper costs, actually, it's Rico that is the most cost-effective for the town. So that would be the recommendation and the request.
And the interesting thing about the two bids is they're so close.
Yes, they're very close.
And once the research was done on the purchase of the materials, like the roll and ink and, you know, service contract, I think that is probably the best way to go. By the way, just so you know, we also have Rico for our copiers, so that does kind of line up with a support issue as well.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the bid from Rico.
And this would be for the double roll?
For, yep, double roll for eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two.
So I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that. And now I'd go to executive session, purpose of real estate transaction by political subdivision, when publicly this would or could cause the price increase. And I would also like to invite Mary Ann Channelli with us. So.
Make a motion, join executive session and bring Mary Ann Channelli with us. Seven thirty-nine.
Seven thirty-nine. I will second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to follow the executive session.
Add.
Okay, seven fifty-three.
With no action taken.
No action taken.
There's a motion to follow the executive session, seven fifty-three, with no action taken. Party who made that motion, I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're now at item G, which is other. Is there anybody else who has anything to say for other? Yes, of course I do. All right. There are a couple of things that have occurred over the weekend. One was Project Pin Food Drive in dedication in honor by Raquel. It was a very nice ceremony this weekend for the dedication of the bench, which is now in the Lions Park. And immediately following that, we went over to do a food collection for Project Pin and Food Drive was very successful. I want to definitely thank the staff members here that came to help and donated a very, very successful event because we ended up with a collection of eighteen hundred pounds of food and over five thousand, five thousand and fifteen dollars, which was collected that day here at the town hall. I know Tim had mentioned, he sent out the copy of the letter that we put together for them. And for those people who just couldn't make it out, they sent in, well, he's, he's still counting, but he's at around three thousand dollars for donations from, from those people sending them in. So very, very successful and helpful to Project Pin. So again, thank you to the residents of the town of Plainfield, to the staff who helped out. And I've told Tim if he ever needs more like that, we're willing to come to the plate and help out, so it was very good. The next item was Friday morning, I put in the application for the heart safe designation. Heart safe designation is something we had as a town years ago, for whatever reason, slipped, didn't get reappated. I talked to Steve and Hotchkiss for the state of Connecticut about how we would go about doing the reapplication and followed the guidelines to do that, at which Steve called me back in two hours and emailed me back in two hours said that the application has been accepted. We are now again a Plainfield heart safe community. So they'll get back to us soon with some certificates. And I think there was also some signs throughout the town that will be placed out there as well. So we will continue that trend. We had, as part of that, just so people can understand what we do, there was information on healthy eating, information on healthy lifestyles and activities that they can do to live a healthier life. But we also offered two CPR classes for free for residents. There was offers for six in each class. We didn't get that full complement, but we'll continue doing those type of things throughout the year and also in the fall. There was a CPR life-saving certification for lifeguards as well. So we'll continue going forward with that. I think that's a, a good idea for, for us when, especially when you're cooped up after a while through COVID. Just to know that, you know, we're trying to do our best to give some ideas and alternative ideas to, to stay healthy. So that was something we've been working on for about a year. Finally came through. There will be some other events, as you know, coming forward. I just want to make sure we mention and don't forget them. July fifteenth will be the Bike Night on downtown Plainfield. There'll be a close-off area. And we're looking forward to the public coming to that. The next thing would be August sixth, the town plans on doing fireworks, as we have done in the past, up on the hill at, where you have Shepherd Hill. We also plan the next day having the event for the, this is, this is for the Plainfield Business Association. And that is the Saturday Plainfield Day here at the Lions Park. And that will be followed up by the next day, which will be our traditional VJ parade back to where it was before. So those are the events that are coming up. I know we have another thing coming at the end of this month, which is Memorial Day. We do, plan to do a celebration to rededicate the parks for Musa, Veterans Park, and also for the Plainfield Veterans Park. So more information will be coming out soon on that, but we'll definitely, to do as many events as we can to keep the public active. So unless there's anything else for other?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and I will second at seven fifty-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.